Welcome to the regular town council meeting for the town of Cave Creek, Arizona. This is Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We've already had our roll call, so we're at the pledge allegiance and our first presenter is going to lead us. RJ Carden from Maricopa County.
Mayor members of council, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public announcements, we have a couple. First, I'd like to recognize that we had what could have been a momentous inflection point and tragedy for the country. When former President Trump was wounded this weekend. He recalls the times in my lifetime when John Kennedy, Robert Kennedy, Martin Luther King, the nine eleven, it seems like every one of those that occurs represents some kind of inflection point, often a bad one. So maybe we'll avoid the negative turn of events that those have often signaled. The part, our role, and that is we deal not with national things, we deal with police, fire, water, sewer, the essential things in life. So I'm very proud of the fact that Cave Creek has a strong reputation and a strong history of nonpartisan getting to work on the things that are important to the people of town. And so that that is our job. Now we have next to announce be Tom McGuire.
Thank you. Ernie and I had the pleasure of working for many years. I'm sorry, Ernie and I had the pleasure of working for many years with Dick Esser. He was a dedicated servant to the town of Cave Creek. He passed away on June twenty-second. Dick was started in service for Cave Creek with the Planning Commission in two thousand and five. He left the planning commission to become a council member for five terms, including one term as vice mayor. Dick was known for his involvement in transportation issues, for being a town representative to the Maricopa Association of Governments, to listening to the citizens, which I think we all hope and think we all do. He always came to the meetings well prepared and he is dedicated, was dedicated to his wife Holly and his two sons of whom he was very proud. Thank you.
Other announcements from council?
Going to miss him a lot.
Yeah.
Seeing no further ones, we have called the public.
David Phelps.
Thank you, Mayor, for your comments. Dick Esser, certainly a good Cave Creek institution. We had our points of view, we agreed on stuff, we disagreed on stuff. Come to find out, he liked my house and I really liked his wife. Nice balance. Holly is a wonderful soul person for our community. I wish her well. I've been thinking about a better way to have this time of the year where we have our elections every two years. Because we're not going to really get out of the election cycles. But I think we can do a better job at having elections and communicating with our citizenry and our voters. And what I would propose is that we would basically institute the library as the middle ground where we come with our ideas on a weekly basis. We don't count on social media feeds, we don't count on tabloids. We don't count on somebody having an advantage disadvantage monetarily. We meet there once a week. From the time you're certified by the town clerk as a candidate until the last day we meet before the election. So things can change and people can come as much as they want. We'll find out in one election season whether this idea has any merit. But I would propose that we would seriously consider a better way to hold each election for the betterment of our community. Because what we're doing now. Bob, I know you, you can communicate what you want to communicate. But what I've seen secondhand, of course, is, you know, it's not misinformation, it's missing information, but it changes the connotation of what you're trying to say. So instead of me saying, you know, you're no good, blah, blah, we don't have to do that. We can come talk about all the principles you want to talk about as long and every other ones. Everybody who's in the election cycle, I think it would be a powerful thing. I think it would really help our community aspect because it would take the vitriol and the dissension hopefully and it would educate it. And you could ask whoever's running. Once a week, you got a chance. And maybe we only meet for an hour, maybe we only meet for an hour and a half. I don't know. Anyway, that's the idea. Thank you.
For those who haven't been to a council meeting, by state law, there is a call to the public, it's written in state law and the the council cannot respond to the words in call the public because it's not on the agenda. And only agendized items can be discussed and acted upon. But there is one exception when someone calls out your name and I certainly I think we can do better in the election. I don't exactly know what I've done to deserve that, but I stick to the issues. I don't call names. I expect honesty. I think I have a reputation, lifelong reputation for such, but I think you're right, David, there's probably better ways we can communicate in elections. Thank you. Others?
Catherine Abey.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council and everybody. Kind of expounding on the election idea, that's a great idea. I liked his idea. But I wanted to wish you all well, whoever is going to win, however it turns out, I wish you all well. I am only been in, I've only been a resident here for about four months now. And I'm doing my best to get up to speed and learn everything about how the government runs here. I think that, in my opinion, I think that for a town of approximately fifty-four, fifty-five hundred residents with roughly twenty-one, twenty-two hundred voters, which tells me that a lot of people have second homes here. That our budget is high. I wasn't here for your budget cycle. But when you take it down, and I spoke with Catherine about this, a million dollars a week. You spend a million week, you bring in a million a week. I just want to impart on you, that's a lot of money for twenty-one hundred voting residents that live here. But I'd like to just impart on whoever wins, whether it's the same council or not, I know that the manager will be here, the attorney. Just be good stewards. Please watch out for the funds that come in and go out. Please keep this community, the beautiful, unique desert community that it is, the rural community that it is. And be mindful of what the people want, always. I like that you reach out and you ask for committees. I think that's amazing because you're bringing the public into it. That's a good thing. It shouldn't be just four people on a seven-person council that makes decisions for the twenty-one hundred registered voters and the few that come in the cold weather time. So in your organizational chart, it, you do say, it shows the citizens of Cave Creek, they're way up here. And then you have the mayor and the council and all the various departments. And Catherine, you said to me, you have to run the budget, the town like an enterprise, and that's true. In a business, the business has to be run in the same fashion, but they have to serve their shareholders. Shareholders are very important. The citizens of Cave Creek are your shareholders. And I ask that you should be mindful of that and protect us and protect the beauty of the desert. And who Cave Creek is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional speakers.
Yay.
Town manager report.
Mayor, Council, I do not have a report for you tonight.
Okay. I, I do have something to, to, to. Could you talk with Fareed Bailey, the legislative liaison at SRP? I spoke to him in depth and then he spoke to some senior managers at SRP, the Salt River Project. We can still get in on the Bartlett Lake Dam project. We have till January. We have to do a statement of needs as to what our water shortfall is and what we need to make up. It, it's prioritized based on our statement of need. If our statement need is high, we get water. If our statement need is low, we don't. The other piece of it, and I'll give you his phone number separately. The other piece of this is there's a lot of misinformation about having to run pipes from the Salt River Project. It's not how it works. They put their flow directly into the Central Arizona Project Canal. So downstream people would get whatever allocation we put in, in return, we would get their upstream allocation from it. It's a water offset. So I, I do think we will have to pay to get involved in it. We have until January. But I think it would be well worth your while and Sean's while to go talk to SRP. I know we have a twenty-five percent minimum cut coming from CAP. I think we'll, even though it, there's going to be a gap, we're going to have to buy water for a few years. I do think it would alleviate the gap in the long term. Just a thought.
Mayor, Council, I will report back to the full council on this after I do a little bit more research based on the information you've shared with me.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a presentation to council by Maricopa County Parks with an update on Spur Cross and the rodeo grounds presented by RJ Carden.
Got to press the button. Members of council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you so much for allowing me time today to be here with you. It's always good to be with you and, and talk a little bit about Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area and Cave Creek Regional Park as well, which are both within your city limits. Luke asked me to hit on a few highlights, but I also, with your indulgence, would like to talk about something that has been on our collective minds being Maricopa County Parks and the town for a number of years now. And that's updating the Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area Master Plan. So we finished our park system master plan and it was approved by the Board of Supervisors in December of two thousand and twenty-three. In that document, there was a call to update all of our park master plans. And so we've undertaken a very ambitious effort of trying to do nine park master plan updates over the next three years. That will be a lot of work, but we've hired J-two engineering to help us with that effort. And I was telling the mayor that that was one of the last things that your previous town manager kept harping on me is we need to update this master plan. So Carrie, I'm sorry you're not here, but we are updating the master plan for you with Spur Cross. And so I'd like to turn it over to Aaron Allen, have him go through and give you kind of where we're at. We started late this spring, so we're just getting, getting going on this process. Talk to you a little bit about the process, where we're at, and then how the citizens can become more involved with this process as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Aaron. And I'll also mention that Michael Park with Terricon is here as well. He's one of the sub consultants on the project. And he was one of the gentlemen that actually did the first Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area Master Plan. So he has some history with Spur Cross Ranch. So I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, RJ. All right, so, you know, just general overview, you know, what is a park master plan? So this is going to be a guide that looks at, you know, the parks, the recreation facilities, open space. And it's a planning document that looks at over the next ten to fifteen years of what's going to be happening in the system. So what does it include? Has a lot of extensive research, a lot of extensive analysis. Give me one second, I'm going to move this little view window off of my slide. Oh, you can't read it. Yeah. There we go. So it also, but a big component of it is actually reaching out to the community and gaining input, input from the community on what sort of amenities they'd like to see improvements or non-improvements and things like that within these park specific things. So how will this be used? You know, one, it's going to, by reaching out to the community and getting input from the stakeholders, it's going to build that credibility, support and consensus for future potential improvements and how the parks are ran. It's also going to be in a way to actually tell the community about what's going on within the different parks. It's going to identify capital improvement projects and how to be fiscally responsible and, and implement those improvements throughout. And it's also going to be set up some guiding principles as how development can occur, when they occur, programming and implementation strategies. So here you can see on this map that there are two parks that are within Cave Creek boundaries. So you have Spur Cross that's up on the northern edge, you kind of have Cave Creek Regional Park, which is very central. And those are actually linked by about four miles of the, the Maricopa Trail that connects both of those. The light blue area is all of the Arizona state land that's around the vicinity as well. And then the little kind of pinkish purple line is the town of Cave Creek boundary. So Spur Cross, just a quick overview, little over two thousand acres. Lot of biking, hiking, wildlife viewing areas, some educational opportunities. Cave Creek Regional Park is just under three thousand acres. Again, a lot of the same programming of biking, camping, hiking, horseback riding, outdoor education. Some of the amenities there, lots of a couple restrooms, some trailheads, lots of trails, picnic areas, day use areas. So Cave Creek Park, the last time it's undergone two different master plans previously, nineteen sixty-five and then nineteen eighty was the last time that it was updated. Some of the main takeaways that came out of that last master plan was to look at acquisition of adjacent properties to potentially expand the park, include educational opportunities for the public. And then also to, you know, protect the existing biodiversity within the site. You know, looking to reduce vehicular traffic and, and really I'm kind of allowing where, how to balance the interaction of people to the conservation areas. Spur Cross, the last master plan that was done was that was two thousand and four. Again, some of the main takeaways was again conservation and protecting of those natural resources and then promoting educational opportunities for people, interpretive and recreational for the public. So the methodology is basically the approach of how do we go about doing a parks master plan? So we start off with kickoff meetings, kind of introducing the team. And we have a lot of inventory and analysis where we're looking at old plans. We tour all the facilities. While we're touring the facilities, we actually look at the existing infrastructure that's in place, see how it's aging, what improvements need to be made. We also go out to the public and we research, you know, what their needs and wants are. We go ahead and we are also going to look at operations, we're going to look at maintenance plans and, you know, analyzing some potentially cost recovery. And also, also overall economic impact that these parks have on the facilities and the community around them. And then all that information gets fed into a draft plan. And then finally, a, we finalize that plan after we get a lot of feedback from all these stakeholders. An interesting new technology that we're actually using to help implement and inform some of these planning decisions is something called the Placer AI. This is actually a new technology that looks at cellphone data, allows the, us to look at where people are coming from regionally to these parks, where they're going within the parks specifically, how long they're staying at certain areas. So you can kind of see, there's a heat map here where the, the higher red versus the blue, those are the concentrations where you have the most people coming. This is a great, been a great tool to find out, you know, where the concentration of people are, where improvements might need to be made because they're either popular, where potentially trails might need to be improved or where potentially you're even seeing maybe rogue trail users going off and causing damage to part of the preserve that you might be wanting to protect. So public input so far. April seventeenth, there was a stakeholder meeting for Cave Creek and Spur Cross. May fourth, there was a, an open house and then may for Spur Cross and then on May eleventh, there was also a open house for Cave Creek. There's been some surveys that have gone out. Apart from this project, the, the parks has worked with ASU to do onsite surveying at all of their parks. So far, as of June twenty-fifth, they've gotten about twenty-five hundred responses. Their goal is to get about thirty-one hundred responses of those parks, specific surveys. And they're also doing an offsite survey that they've sent out to park users. And as of June, they've got just shy of four hundred responses with a goal of about twelve hundred responses on that. And these are specific surveys to park users. As part of this project, we've actually done a, what they call a statistically valid survey. So that's gone out to a sampling of residents within Maricopa County to see how they are using the parks or if they even do use the parks. And so as of the twenty-fourth, we've kind of hit that response rate of expecting six hundred responses back on that statistically valid survey. There's also a website that's been established. There's been marketing of this through social media and different places around the parks. You can click on the QR code. Takes you to a dedicated website where the community can give feedback. There's maps of the park, they can drop little pins and give comments. There's also an online survey that tells you can give feedback on the park and amenities that you'd like to see, how you're using the park, improvements that you'd like to be, see made as well. So that's out there in live. This will stay active throughout, you know, the, the year. Overall schedule, so as RJ said, we're doing nine parks over the next three years. So this first year we are doing Cave Creek, Spur Cross, and we're also doing McDowell. So the, kind of the schedule for year one. Like we said, we started in the beginning of February, we are hoping to have kind of the public engagement, all the data collection, analysis, all completed by about September. We'll develop this draft master plan for review in October with the, hopefully the final master plan wrapped up at the end of the year for all three facilities. And with that, if there's any questions.
RJ or gentleman, can you elaborate on how Spur Cross is different in its mission than the other county parks?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember McGuire. Spur Cross is one of two sites that is a conservation area in our park system. So it, it differs greatly and I, and I think Adam had a little bit of explanation in there that the number one mission of a conservation park is truly conservation of the park and then education and interpretation and recreation opportunities.
But as I understand, the recreational facilities would not have the span that we see in most other county parks.
That's typical. I will say, Mr. McGuire, Councilmember McGuire, our other conservation area happens to be the Haciompa River Preserve that we recently acquired. That came with a historic building, so it does have a built-in nature center. But, but yes, conservation parks would be much less recreation opportunities and amenities.
Thank you.
I had a question in the beginning regarding the like a thermal map where you're tracking people. How, what technology is that? Are you using the pings off the cell phones or is it's an aerial shooting down?
Yeah, it's.
It's kind of, I'm not familiar with it. I'm kind of intrigued.
Yeah. Councilmember, it is using, yes, your cellphone basically takes independent data. They can't see who you are specifically. All it is knowing is basically it's a, a ping of it sees one cellphone go from here to, to the next location.
Who's collecting the information? Just out of curiosity. Is this, is there a vendor that does this for the county? Oh, thank you.
Sorry. Is there a vendor that, that has the technology that acquires this for the county or any client or? Yeah, correct. It's called Placer AI is the connect, the, the company that, that is collecting the data. And multiple, you can actually have a subscription to it. So I know very, a lot of different municipalities are now actually starting to get a subscription to it and you can utilize that, that subscription service for this data. Just one final question. What other applications would there be for that? I mean, for example, would, if you had a large gathering of people, would it give an accurate number of attendees or? Yeah, yes, actually. So town of Gilbert recently just started using this and so they had their Fourth of July celebration and they were actually able to see that within Gilbert Regional Park, they had X number of attendees within that area and then actually they could even see that within a certain mile perimeter of the park, they had other people that were stationed, you know, for X number of time, watching the fireworks show and things like that. And so, thanks.
Mayor, Councilmember, it, it's very interesting data and I can tell you just anecdotally, one thing that, that, that I picked up from it. The number one place that people visit after going to Spur Cross is the restaurants. So we know that they're coming.
Derek Queen is number one.
But it's very interesting data that they can pull out of that.
It's almost like a reverse of game tagging, it seems like, but I don't want to be impolite. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, how well attended were your open houses?
The stakeholder meetings were, were very well attended. The open houses, I would say we had a crowd of about twenty to thirty on each one. Yeah.
So I'm wondering, what information are you using to reach your conclusions for your proposed master plans?
So it will be a combination of some of the public input that we've received from the master plans. It'll be those statistically valid surveys that went out to the residents of Maricopa County. And then it will also be the parallel online website where people can go to and provide that data and feedback.
So it's primarily public information that you're utilizing to reach your conclusions and recommendations.
Yes.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, I, I would also say that that's one of the things that excited me about being here tonight and, and explaining this to you. Because I wanted to reach a greater audience of Cave Creek residents so that they can go onto the website and provide us with information.
Would it be possible to take the QR code and put out on our next thing, hey, take the survey for our next newsletter?
Look at it and I think that's a great idea.
Other questions?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Members of Council. There were also some updates that I wanted to provide you about Spur Cross and Cave Creek Ranch. Cave Creek Regional Park. So for Spur Cross, just, just one thing, I know it was December of twenty-two when, when between the, the town and the county, we acquired Spur Cross Ridge, the thirty acres up there, but I think it's worth noting that again and just celebrating that success. I mean, that was a, a, a great acquisition for the park for the conservation area. It extinguished the last known access easement.
Oh, thank you. It extinguished the last known access easement within that park, which was, was huge. So it was, it was thirty acres, but it was a very significant acquisition. So I'm really excited that we're able to do that and hopefully we can continue to work on things like that in the future. And that brings us to the Town County IGA. The original IGA that was set up when Spur Cross was acquired and sets out the management of that property between the town and Maricopa County. That IGA is still in effect and in force. But with the acquisition of that new land, we need to incorporate that into the intergovernmental agreement between the two parties. There was a, a component of that intergovernmental agreement that allowed for Cave Creek residents to get free access to Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area. That actually expired. We have not been enforcing that. And so I would like to, with the council's agreement, is work on getting that phrase back in the intergovernmental. phrase back in the intergovernmental agreement and getting that updated. And then the other thing I would like to do, there's references in the intergovernmental agreement as well to the old master plan. And so as we get this new master plan done, I think we need to add those new references to a new master plan into the intergovernmental agreement. And and Luke and I have been working on that Grady along with the the town council as well as our county council. So we'll be ready to bring that back to you at some point in the future. But I'd like to get some of the master plan language updated in there as well. The other thing, just a point of information, the Maricopa Trail, a lot of the trail that goes trail miles that go into Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area are designated Maricopa Trail. And the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors last year approved a general fund amount to allow me to hire four trail maintenance people for the Maricopa Trail. Countywide, but that will have a big impact on both Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area, Cave Creek Regional Park and the trail that goes in between the two. So I'm excited about that and and just wanted to share that with you. Next, we are working with a company to continue to improve the signage in Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area along the Maricopa Trail, leading over to Cave Creek Regional Park. And then within Cave Creek Regional Park as well. So it'll provide more more mileage, information, better directional parking lot this way, trail that way, visitor center that way. So again, just trying to give the, we're getting more and more visitors, especially since COVID, that tend to be novice hikers, and that's great. We want to see those people out there. But we're finding that we need to continue to provide them more and more information. And I think additional trail signage will will do that for us. The original master plan for Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area called for more archaeological site interpretation. And that's one of the things that even though we haven't updated the the new master plan, I think it's important to go ahead and do that. And for for most of you, you probably know that a large site up there at the top of the Tortuga Trail was excavated by Arizona State University. And all of that, all of those artifacts remain in in there holding. So we would like to take and put interpretive signage up there with some photos of the old artifacts and information on the site, how it what it was, how it was used, et cetera. So that's one of the things we have in the budget for this next year. And Kevin Smith, the park manager, has some great ideas on making that that happen. And then finally, I know one of the things we're all concerned about is fire. And that's primarily caused by invasive species. And we need to continue to do more fire fuel reduction. And so I just wanted to just show you, we can do a whole presentation on natural resource management of Spur Cross at some point. But over the last three years, we've been doing a lot of invasive species removal in Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area, along with all of the other parks. And we have a number of methods. We have manual pulling, we have cutting, and we have our last resort is herbicide, but we do, we'll have to do some of that, especially with the stink net. It's just hard to get rid of it. And so we focused a lot on the trail corridors because we've been working with fire personnel. And we found that even though those trails may only be three foot wide, four foot wide, five foot wide, they become great protection boundaries or barriers for firefighters to get out there. And they'll they'll make that their point of fighting a fire is right along the trail. So we're doing that along the river corridor. We're making sure we're trying to get rid of as many invasive species as possible. I mentioned, we've been working with a group from the National Park Service that we've paid them to come out and do some invasive species removal, and that's through a grant that we received. We've also received a second grant from the Department of Forestry and Fire Management to continue to do work this next year out at Spur Cross and Cave Creek Regional Park. So again, I didn't want to have a long lengthy discussion on this, but I wanted to make sure you were aware that this is a high priority for us and will continue to work on fire fuel reduction and invasive species management, not only at this park, but at others. And just one final thing, we have a great group of folks called the Desert Defenders. And they're just volunteers that go out there with bags full of just empty bags. And then they bring them back filled with stink net and buffalo grass and red broom and all kinds of stuff that that creates fire. And there's a number of folks from right here in the town of Cave Creek that consider themselves desert defenders. And so it's just a great, great program that helps us out. And then finally, I just wanted to update you on a couple of things with Cave Creek Regional Park. I I know you've talked a little bit about the rodeo arena and transferring that property over to the town, and we are committed to doing that. The first step of that is that is under a lease with the Bureau of Land Management to Maricopa County. So we've had numerous discussions, Luke and the Bureau of Land Management. We think the best course of action is to patent that land, so it actually deeds it over to Maricopa County. And then once it's deeded to us, then we can segregate that rodeo ground and deed that over to you or patent. It would be through a BLM patent, you would still have the BLM underlying ownership of it, but it would be then deeded and not leased, so we wouldn't have to go back and re-lease that property every year. We finally, about two months ago, got from BLM, what is the first step to do that? And that is a resolution by our County Board of Supervisors requesting that we patent that land. That resolution is going before the board on August seventh. So that first step will take place. And I I think you already know, but the lease is good through twenty thirty two, which is good that we have a lot of time. It's probably bad because it doesn't put a lot of pressure on the BLM to move as quickly as we may want them to. But that's the length of the IGA that we have with you all too. So you're contiguous with our lease on the property. So our goal is to patent that land over to Maricopa County and then work to transfer that over to the town of Cave Creek. And then finally, we just have a major upgrade project going with the campground at Cave Creek Regional Park. All of the electrical services for the campsites will be changed from the thirty amp to fifty amp service, along with all of the water. Spigots will be completely updated and and new pipes in the ground. And we've already done the leach fields out there. So not the most exciting thing to think about, electrical improvements and sewer improvements, but some of the very, very important things for the operation of the park. And so that park's going to be in good shape for a long time. So with that, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? I want to note that the special entry that citizens of Cave Creek have received is a result of the partnership among the state, the county, and the town to purchase Spur Cross. I think each one put in seven million dollars, so that's our citizens' money. And in the recent acquisition of the thirty acres, the town of Cave Creek and the county put in significant money, each paid about half. And I want to thank the Vicki from the Desert foothills land trust for having allowed that to happen and played a very important part. So Cave Creek has invested and we appreciate the opportunity to reward our citizens by giving them special access.
Absolutely, Mayor and Councilmember McGuire. That's why I without hesitation will recommend that to our Board of Supervisors if that happens. I know many of you have heard me say this time, time after time, but the partnership between the town of Cave Creek and Maricopa County, specific to Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area, is is the best partnership that we have in the entire county with with any city or town. Wickenburg is now becoming close. But but hands down, Cave Creek is still the best partner that that we have. And so I hope that's a good thing, not only for the county, but for the residents of Cave Creek, because they're residents of the county as well.
I'm sorry. So this partnership and the people in this town have a general plan. And this council has a strategic plan. Are you reviewing those as you're looking at building the master plan? And is there a connection? Is there a person who represents the town in those conversations?
Mayor, Councilmember, absolutely. That's one of the things that we have always looked at is the county general plan down, the city general plan down. And we've been working with Luke very closely on that.
That's it, thanks.
Yes.
Others? The artifacts at ASU interest me. Who who actually owns those artifacts?
Mayor, I would have to get back to you who actually owns them. I think if you go back to the two thousand four master plan, and I've read that several times, there's there's language in there that we have access to those artifacts at any point. I believe, and somebody may correct me if I'm wrong, but some of those artifacts have actually gone to the Cave Creek Museum and are on display there.
I think we have clarification. Could you come up to?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm Evelyn Johnson, Executive Director of the Cave Creek Museum. Last November, we were notified by ASU that they were taking all the artifacts back. And they have done so, and they told us that it would be a couple of years and we could reapply for them. They were not on exhibit until I want to say about two thousand eight. We were able to negotiate, but there's boxes and boxes and boxes, something like two hundred and fifty. And we went through those to to secure those, and now we no longer have access to them. Unfortunately, we don't have that dedicated space now for, but I would love to bring them back.
Now, they were in boxes or they were on display?
We had, I think we had four boxes that our archaeologists, Mary Carney and Grace Schoonover negotiated to put on loan at the Cave Creek Museum. They are actually owned by ASU. And we have to request them again from ASU.
Okay, thank you, Evelyn.
We'll work with you on that.
But I couldn't quite hear you.
I said, we will work with you on that. Do whatever we can to to make that happen, because I'd like to have those those on display.
Well, it'd be nice to have some pieces on display.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, stuck in a box at ASU doesn't exactly. Because, you know, that's always bugged me a little bit about Spur Cross is it's hard to see the petroglyphs and I mean, when you're up there now, some people damaged some of them, the ones you can see, they've been damaged. But it'd be nice if we, if visitors up there could see some of the archaeology, as far as I know, it's all off limits. Although I can see the the Ho Ho Com fort from my back porch, and I always point that out to visitors.
There is one petroglyph that is right on the dragonfly trail. So to my knowledge, that's the only one where there is public access. But if you haven't seen it, go up and take a look.
And and Mayor, just just for your information, that is the intent is to actually get people off of the Tortuga Trail and actually build a small trail that they could go over and visit some of those sites with interpretive signs up there on the mesa.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Does that conclude your, well, I have one request. You need to keep us ahead of Wickenburg. Let us know whatever we need to make sure we stay in the lead.
Mayor, I assure you, we will do that.
Thank you very much. I agree, it's been a wonderful partnership and having those kind of parks within this little town is, well, it's thirty six square miles, but six thousand people is quite a feather in our cap and as it is the county. So we're and the land trust, Vicki, has been our partner all the way along in all things, and we certainly appreciate the land trust. She's in the back room.
Appreciate stand up.
Vicki, stand up, yeah, let us all see you.
And Vicki.
Thank you for your presentation and we'll see you again. Next, we have a presentation to council by Cave Creek Rodeo Days Executive Board on the Cave Creek Rodeo Days Event and Ticket Sales, presented by Mike Poppenweimer, Cave Creek Rodeo Days Executive Board Member. You used to be called the president, as I recall. I still am. Okay, at least for a few more months anyways. My voice, I just got over a cold, so bear along with me. But Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, thanks for your opportunity for the Cave Creek Rodeo Days to give you an update on this past rodeo, which we promised we would do every year. But just like it says up there, our partnership, just like with the county, is very, we celebrate our Western heritage and community spirit. And here again, if it wasn't for the town council being supportive for our our mission, it wouldn't be as successful. And what I'm going to do is go through, I think everybody's already seen this PowerPoint, but I want to go through and digest a little bit about it, about our events. And first of all, I'll start off with the, on our PRCA, I just want to say that we're one of six hundred PRCA rodeos in the in the country. We belong to a turquoise circuit, which represents fourteen rodeos, seven of them in Arizona and the other balance in New Mexico. So we're one of seven here in Arizona with professional rodeo. The first event. My point this, there, oops, I'm going backwards, sorry. Way, nope, now I'm way ahead of it. Okay, I guess I gotta be patient here. Okay, there. Our first event that we kicked off this year was in January twentieth at the Holland Center. We had our royalty pageant. We had four contestants, we crowned as a teen queen and a queen. Both these ladies are doing sixty to eighty events this year. They've already done, they've already appeared forty seven times since January. The representing us and other rodeos, parades, special events. So these young ladies are definitely a star in our rodeo eye because they're great ambassadors. A new program that we kicked off was our princesses and wrangler program. We limited to thirty five to seventeen year olds, and we filled up the first month of Cave Creek Kids. So this is really kind of exciting, our royalty program. We have thirty princesses and and wranglers, plus a great bunch of ladies representing us. The next event we had obviously was in March sixteenth, we had our parade. This year, we had seventy two entries compared to only fifty entries the year before. So we were up on our entries and participants, this is a new record, we had eight hundred and forty three participants in the rodeo. Excuse me, the parade. And we had two hundred and nine horses. And of course, we threw in there three donkeys, there was three donkeys in the parade. But this is, this is actually one of the largest community events. Marshall Stein's not here. He said he estimated about fifteen thousand people attended the parade. He was very happy with it because he could open up the streets an hour earlier than he has in the last several years. So you, so we're really excited, we already have two marching bands scheduled for next year in our parade. So we're kind of excited about that. And you can see our grand marshal was Danny from from the Herald's. So it was definitely a fun event. The next event. Okay, is that afternoon at the arena, we had our mutton busting. We had seventy two local kids get on those sheep, ages four to seven, and we had about four hundred and twenty attendees watching it. Next year, we're moving the mutton busting to Sunday. And just because we want to bump it up to at least eighty to ninety kids, because we had to turn away about a dozen kids that couldn't ride. We had so many sheep, so we're going to move that to Sunday, so we have more time to be able to do the more mutton busting. So great support in the mutton, a lot of fun. Next, this is a new event. We used to do in the past golf tournaments, but we couldn't couldn't get the courses around here to be cost effective. So the one year with the two, three years ago, they moved the golf tournament to, I think, Gilbert. I'm not sure, but it I'm not sure, but it was out of town, which was a big mistake. So we went ahead and switched directions. Uh, we have a cornhole tournament now. This is our second year. We had fifty teams, which is a hundred people. We had a hundred and eighty-four people there at the beginning, and at the end we had a little over two hundred, but it was a seven and a half hour tournament. So how many people were there through the whole tournament? I don't know. But, uh, but, uh, total revenue profit made a little over ten thousand dollars. So it's just as good as any golf tournament out there, plus a lot more fun, and it's here in Cave Creek. Okay. Okay, next, uh, we kicked off our rodeo, our All Bulls All Night. Uh, you can see we had over six hundred more attendees this year than last year. Last year was our first year. And we needed to, uh, hit nine hundred attendees to break even, and we did that last year. Uh, so we just did over a thousand. So this year, uh, we're at, we had a total of nineteen sixty-three. So we did very well. It's, it started to be a big night for us. Uh, we had a little over a hundred bull riders, so it was a, a, a fun night. And then obviously Thursday, we go right into our, uh, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. You can see we sold out on Friday, and why you notice on the center bottom picture there, you can see, this just goes to show all the sponsors we had. I'll cover more of that in the back, how many we had, but we could not put up any more banners around the arena. We run out of arena space to put up all the banners for all the sponsors we have. So we have a, a challenge on that next year. Okay, and then Saturday, Saturday, same thing, we sold out. Uh, and now we sold out a good two weeks ahead of time, just so you know. Uh, Friday, uh, Saturday was the night that sold out close to a month out. Then Friday and Sunday, we sold out Thursday, uh, on at least two weeks out. Uh, then of course, there, there's, uh, that's Saturday again. I don't want to keep pressing it. And, uh, there you go. That's, that's Saturday. I think it must, there you go. Then Sunday, Sunday we had, you can see we, that's our, uh, military uh, recognition, uh, event, and we had, uh, skydivers this year. Last year, we had the sky, a couple of them. One landed in a bullpen, the other one landed in the parking lot. This year, all five landed right in the middle of the arena. So it was, it was really, it was a good show. It's very inspiring because each one of these, uh, fire troopers were seen combat. They represented the five, uh, law, um, military. And it's very inspiring to have them tell about those, these people and play their, uh, their, uh, branch song. So it's a great event. There you go. Quick results. Okay, for the rodeos only, we had two hundred and eighteen different volunteers over those four days. Not, this is not counting the volunteers for the parade, the mutton busting, and the cornhole. There, there was a total of about eighty. So we had close to, close to three hundred volunteers for that, for the, for our events that week. And that's all Cave Creek volunteer people. So it was really great support from our community. The, uh, tickets, over, a little over eight thousand tickets, uh, for the, uh, vent vendors. Last year, we had twenty-two vendors because of the change in the fencing. Uh, at the rodeo grounds, we had forty-nine vendors this year. Sponsors, previous years, we had about forty, forty-five. We had fifty-eight sponsors this year. And, uh, and we'll just be, I know that we're being aggressive now. We're selling sponsorship for the Cowboy Channel as well as for programs, which we didn't do last year, so we got a head start on that. So we'll get a lot more national attention with our Cowboy Channel and with the sponsors of that. Last year, we set a record. We had three hundred and ninety-five contestants last year. This year, we had six hundred and thirty-three contestants. Uh, we had a hundred and sixty barrel racers alone. So we, the contestants are coming because they have, we put on a good rodeo. Our, we were very fortunate that, uh, you all remodeled our hospitality. Hospitality is where contestants come and get a free meal. We served over a thousand meals in four days, uh, the hospitality. And that, they don't do that at other rodeos, but we do it here. We're lucky to have the sponsors that provide the food. So that's why the contestants come. Of course, the payout isn't bad either. A hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Yeah. Next. I don't know if I'm pressing it too hard or not hard enough. On our Articles of Incorporation, there's only two things we're responsible for, to be a five oh one C three. And that is give money to charity and do improvements at the rodeo ground. And so far this year, we've given out twenty-four thousand dollars, and we have more that we need to give out. So we're tolling so far, have given over two hundred and one thousand dollars to local charities. So we're really proud of that. And this, this group here is a Woodhills Wrangler for each group that receives charitable donations. Next, this is just the rodeo ground. Uh, it's hard to find. I didn't bring a pointer, but the restrooms were a big hit. Uh, we took advantage of that by raising our ticket price by five dollars, and we blinked an eye on it. Uh, this year, uh, because of hospitality remodeling, that's, that, that's a great asset. But we also at the far, at the south end, uh, we got a plan to put staging and bleachers so we can improve seating by seventy-five, seventy-five, seventy-five people. Okay, and that'll bring us an additional ten thousand dollars revenue around that. So that's the only other change we're doing this year. Well, I shouldn't say the only thing. The, as far as with the arena, the, uh, the other thing I think you're all familiar, and you talked, we talked, gave a presentation, and that is for the skybox. You can see the top left, the old skybox, capacity there was eighteen. Looks a little bit more than eighteen right there, huh? But the, um, but the new skybox, jam them in there. The new skybox capacity is ninety-six, and the return on investment, that's just a little over five years. Uh, the cost, as you, I, I think you already know, the, the cost of it's about five hundred thousand. Uh, but the chairback seats, uh, we've already had a lot of interest in selling them at three hundred dollars a seat. And we could have sold half of it last year. Yeah, so, so the skybox, I'm not going to go into it much more because I, I know the, the council's, uh, already discussed it. And we hope, the big thing here is if you look at the, the bottom right picture, is the big screen is not going to be on the side anymore. It's going to be up on top. So when you walk into that arena, you'll get that wow effect by seeing that big screen right up there in front where everybody can see it. We had a lot of complaints that people couldn't see it back there behind, uh, over there by the Stockmans. I'm going fast, so I, so these people can get, get out of here, but I'm gonna, uh, if you have questions, don't hesitate to interrupt me here. Next, save the date for next year. Okay, the, uh, and last, let's see here. Lastly, the board of directors. Uh, the only thing I really want to touch on here with the board of directors is that we have a great board of directors. Ernie's on our board, and we know how great Ernie is. Okay, so, but I, I got to emphasize that we, we have a strategic plan. We have three areas of our strategic plan, three to five-year plan, financial, uh, arena improvements, and leadership. Leadership's really important on any board, because we don't want all our enthusiasm and community involvement to kind of lose its momentum by having a, uh, a weak board. We have one opening on our board this past year, and we had twenty-seven people apply for it, which is really a great problem to have. So we're very fortunate with that. So we're looking at doing on our board, either go to a bigger board, so we can do more things, because under the financial strategic plan, we have so many, I, things we want to do, everything from a country western music festival, uh, to a concert at the rodeo grounds, uh, to having a horseman's ball, and all kinds of fundraisers, uh, the neat things that we can do with our neat community, with our Western heritage. Uh, the improvements of the arena, we have a list, everything from redoing Stockman's, uh, next to, uh, uh, just developing everything from putting, uh, streetlights out in the parking lot instead of, we spend close to fifteen thousand dollars on, on portable lighting. I don't know, but we have so many groups coming to us now. We had one person once put on a, a, um, you know, barrel racing, uh, um, series, six-week series where they can bring in anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred barrel racers in six weeks. That'll be a big shot for the, not only the community, but for the arena. So, uh, uh, with that, I kind of rattle on really fast, uh, but is there any questions from the council?
Would you point out to some, to all of us, this is a signature event for Cave Creek. When did the Cave Creek rodeo start?
Let's see, you would ask me, nineteen forty-seven? Seventy-seven, not forty-seven.
And we didn't incorporate until the mid-eighties.
That's correct. That was before my time. Uh, incorporated as a five oh one C three, and then that organization left town. Ernie knows the history more, better than I do. Uh, they went ahead, uh, didn't agree with the town council by giving them a seat fee, that three-dollar seat fee, which I forgot to announce how much that was tonight, but, uh, they went ahead and left town. So it was picked up by committee, and they got it rolling again in two thousand seventeen. Is that right, Ernie? And then, uh, here we are today. So, uh, it's come a long ways. We're not leaving town. And we do, I forgot to announce our ticket fee that you already been deposited, but it's, uh, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-seven. Uh, for this year's ticket fee. Last year was just, just over twenty thousand. So, but, uh, I think the, personally, the, our board feels the fee is very reasonable, you know, so we support it. Yes. Any other questions? I know you already discussed the skybox.
Oh, Mike, I, I see no questions here, but I'd just like to thank you for your contributions. Mike has been the president, and he's stepping down to a board position.
Maybe.
You went?
Maybe. I say, I say maybe because we have, uh, our, uh, vice president is having second thoughts because of a job opportunity.
Oh.
Ernie doesn't even know this. It just happened yesterday.
Well, I, I spoiled your surprise, but you've got, just brought the tremendous energy and, and, and business sense, and we've got some things cooking that are, that are really cool. And, uh, we, we, I'm, we're glad to hear about those other events. Uh, we, we're, I think the town is going to see what we can do to bring events into. Now that we have such a facility with restrooms and stadium seating and, uh, and, uh, all the, the bucking chutes and the, um, all the stalls and everything else that's going in out there. It's been, it's been cleaned up. It was out there the other day, uh, for the, uh, when the fire was there, and we have it, had all the, uh, livestock coming in there during emergencies. We also opened the rodeo arena up, and the livestock come in there for another group. So, uh, the rodeo arena is a key part, and you've played a wonderful part. And I also want to recognize Councilmember Bunch for his part. He saved the rodeo a number of years ago, and so, uh, we're all here because of that. So thank you very much, and.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on the, is, we have the consent agenda, which is the approval of Resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, a resolution to the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, appointing the town of Cave Creek Finance Director Sherry R. White as Chief Fiscal Officer of the town for the purpose of submitting the annual expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General's Office for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And number two, approval of Resolution R, number R twenty twenty-four dash ten, a resolution to the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, appointing the town of Cave Creek Finance Director Sherry R. White as the Chief Fiscal Officer of the town for the purpose of submitting the annual expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General's Office for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Your motion to do that.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, all those in favor, seeing my saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes seven zero. We have our first general agenda item, council discussion, possible appointment of utility advisory committee, presented by the utilities director who is online. Welcome, Sean.
Happy to be here, council. Good evening, mayor and council. I think you can hear me a little bit. Uh, sorry, I can't be there in person today. Um, but, uh, yeah, so the action item tonight is, uh, we actually have some people who have, uh, um, volunteered to become part of the town's utility advisory committee, and, uh, we have a quick little PowerPoint just to explain what that is going to deal with. Uh, survey and understand that. Uh, next slide, Ryan. Uh, so people might remember the Water Advisory Committee, uh, the WAC, um, that was in place, uh, since the town purchased the water companies back in two thousand and seven. So in twenty twenty-three, we actually did a code amendment, and we created the Utility Advisory Committee because just prior to that, we had a couple of years where we ran the, the WAC Water Advisor Committee and had a wastewater subcommittee, uh, just on how the code was listed, that became clunky to deal with. So we thought that while, uh, UAC doesn't, uh, um, well, off the tongue as well as WAC does, uh, it actually, I think will work better. Uh, the goal here is to really have, uh, uh, citizens involved in the town's utilities. That is both water and wastewater, because we look at them, uh, in totality. They actually do, uh, blend together, and they're, they're part of all the town's water resources that we need to manage. So the, uh, utility advisory committee acts as an advisory board to the town council. So they work with town staff. Uh, we provide them information, and then they would provide a recommendation to the town council on utility issues. I'll get into more in the next slide. It's, uh, up to five positions is what we have written in town code, and they're two-year terms. So what we're asking tonight, if council so forth, wants to move forward with the applications, is that, uh, that they, uh, have up to five people, uh, on, um, committee, and, uh, they would be acting for your, uh, for the town council for the next two years. Again, uh, at least five members, and what we set it up is that they need to be part of the town's water utility, because there's a lot less, uh, wastewater customers. Uh, well, we have between the two water companies, we have about forty-four hundred accounts right now, active accounts. We only have nine hundred wastewater accounts. But we thought if someone's actually on the water system, that makes sense, and they can talk to wastewater issues also, and, and, uh, provide some input. And, uh, what we changed in code is that Desert Hills will be represented and provided is their submission interest in by candidates. My understanding is that there's five candidates, uh, that meet the first criteria of, uh, being on the town's water system in Cave Creek. And there's three, uh, residents who are interested, or customers in Desert Hills who are interested. Next slide, Ryan. So what we set up is that, uh, not put a lot of burden on staff, uh, but we've set it up that they meet at least twice per year. That can be added to, but at least have two meetings a year. And, uh, uh, I like the way we put this in code is that they'll have the zeal to improve the town's water supplies. And that's going into water conservation efforts, which are very important as we move forward this next upcoming year with things that might be changing in the, the Central Arizona Project, um, and our Colorado River allocation. And, uh, to help represent the customer's interest, uh, they'll be helping us look at, uh, review of utility revenues, um, which puts back to our expenditures also, um, talking about water supply and drought planning, which we do have some, some things in fact, but, uh, you know, this could be a group that can help us uh, better, uh, champion or voice, uh, the issues moving forward that, that I think we're going to be dealing with for the next few years and ongoing in the town's utilities for drought. And to provide some recommendations to the council on service policies and rates, uh, as we move forward, as we wrap up our master plan, uh, we'll have some new projects that we'll go on and bring forward to the capital program, but that also may, uh, have an impact on the rates. That's something to be discussed. And this would be the advisory board. That will be the first representation to hear those discussions and then provide a recommendation to council. Um, next slide, Brian. So with that, um, it's up to council to, uh, point to the members. And again, my understanding, uh, from Teresa's email today, that there's five Cave Creek residents, and there's three Desert Hills applicants, um, before council to consider. So with that, I will be quiet.
Okay. If, if we have the, the in the room, uh, do we have those, Teresa? Give them a chance to introduce themselves?
Sure.
Uh, Robert Dietz?
I'm Robert Dietz. I live in Desert Hills. I'm a Cave Creek water, uh, user. Um, I'm a mechanical engineer. Been living up here for twenty-five years, primarily in Desert Hills. Love the area. Competed at the rodeo ground. I haven't. My daughter did the rodeo grounds when she was competing, but I love the area. Do you have any questions for me?
Seeing none. Thank you very much. Thank you for applying.
Matt Henny?
Hi there. My name's, uh, Matt Henny. I've been up here for about five years, been in Arizona for about twenty-five years. Um, saw it on the water bill and just thought if there's any way I can help, I'd, uh, definitely jump at it. And being a little bit younger, maybe I have a long-term horizon I can bring to it at forty or fifty years. So that would probably be, uh, how I would pitch it to you guys. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Carol Kepler?
I'm Carol Kepler. I've lived in Desert Hills about twenty-three years, and I'm just really here to help and learn about our water issues in our community and the face, face in our state too. So you have any questions for me?
Seeing none. Thank you very much. Thank you for applying.
Justin Martin?
Mayor, vice mayor, council members. Um, my name's Justin Martin. I've been in Desert Hills.
Been in Desert Hills area for about seven and a half years. Really from Michigan. And I've actually spent more of my life now in Arizona than anywhere else. Grew up in a small village in Michigan, a farming community of about nineteen hundred people. So I know the values of being a part of a small community and giving back to that community. And that's kind of what I'm looking to do here.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Sorry, Nancy Marino.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I have a vast background in water and I love of how important water is. So I teach at university and have taught water for many years, as well as I worked for DOD. And then I went to school at UCLA extra for aquifer knowledge. So I understand how important groundwater is, as well as I've toured the entire western, just about everything in the western water system. So I'm a native of Arizona. I live in Cave Creek. I have lots of animals and I have a big love and interest in how important water is in our future, because I think we have a lot of challenges in our future. And so I have knowledge that I can bring to this, as well as a lot of research background with my university background that I can then bring to council so that you can make the best decisions we can make.
Thank you.
Leanne Sherman.
Mayor, vice mayor, council, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I'm Leanne Sherman. I've been a resident of Cave Creek since two thousand and eight. I'm a dentist in the community and been spending most of my time giving back to the profession. I've recently semi-retired and want the opportunity to give back to the, to the state or the city that I live in. We all know that, that water is an issue and with increasing numbers of residents coming in, our quality from what I've read and researched has been nothing less than superb. But the quantity of water is what our main concern is now. I know we have the new project that's set to come into place in two thousand twenty-six, which may lead issues for someone like myself as a resident of how is that going to increase our water bill? So whatever I can do to help, learn and provide feedback to the community, I'd be honored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
William Sullivan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's William Sullivan. I have been a resident of Arizona since fifty-nine, moved up to Cave Creek in two thousand fifteen. I am an attorney or I'm still licensed attorney, but no longer practice. Have to, happen to work a lot in water. In fact, I worked with the town of Cave Creek's prior owner of the water company, Cave Creek Water, when, when I was in private practice and helped them get an assured water supply back in the, I think it was designated about ninety-two. Anyway. So I'm very familiar with water issues. Been, it's been a major part of my practice for forty-plus years. And since I'm retiring, I thought it would be a great opportunity to take some of that experience and help and learn. As to, I think it's important though, that the town balance costs versus long-term needs and make sure that the consumers can afford the cost of the water too. And so that's one of my roles I would, on the advisory committee is to make sure that there's a good balance between the two, reasonable prices, as well as looking for a very financially stable and long-term project viability of the system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Walsh.
Mayor Morris and councilman. I am happy to apply for this position. I have an extensive water background for many years. I, for fifteen years, I was a docent at the Desert Botanical Garden. In my earlier days in, in Cave Creek, I've been here thirty-five years. In the eighties, I was on the Foothills Community Foundation Water Study Committee, and they actually tested all the wells in the area and also care, Cave Creek Carefree. And we gave reports every year, the area of what was going on before there were water companies in either town. I have a passion for conservation, but I also have a deep financial background. I was also a financial advisor with USAA for eight years. So I'm a mixture of conservation and also hardcore common sense of training people how to use their water more effectively. And I really want to stress that I think that being a liaison with our citizens, I know a lot of people and I see a lot of people and there's a lot of misinformation about water and I would love to be part of the informed people.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
That, that completes our list and the, the enabling code says that we have to have it, we should have at least five members, but it doesn't limit the number of members. So first I'd like to ask anyone on council, if they'd like to ask any questions or?
No, I, I think we've been trying to encourage more participation. And if we have eight people, you know, we initially had nine, one withdrew, we have eight people. I don't see any reason why we can't have a board of eight people. My just personal opinion.
I agree. They're exceptional volunteers. Thrilled that we have you all.
Let's go. I'm, I'm going to give this nomination to the, my colleague to the left. He actually mentioned this to me last week. It seems like we have our consensus going here. I, I think everybody agrees that this is a really strong group of people. So I'm going to ask you to make the motion.
The motion I'm making is to appoint all eight well-qualified candidates to become a part of our utilities advisory committee and to welcome them to that position. Thank you for applying.
Dusty, you want the second on it?
Second.
I do have public comment.
And we have public comment. Is there any, is there any public comment?
David Phelps.
Is that the first time? Thank you, David. Okay, so this is not financials and we have a motion, we have a second. So with that, I'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, passes seven zero. Welcome. Next item on the agenda is council discussion approval to award a contract for the phase one Tally Ho and tandem local drainage mitigation project to Gonzalez Asphalt for amount up to three hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars, presented by the town engineer and public works director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. This is a long time coming. It seemed to take a long time to get the engineer to get our start design, but they did a very good job with it. Today, we're going to recommend award of just a portion of the project. We're going to recommend a portion, the phase one, which is Tally Ho. Phase two tandem. We found that when the bids came in that they, or before the bids came in, the engineer's estimate was very high. So we divided it into two phases. The graphic shows Tally Ho as phase one and tandem as phase two. We're doing both the part, we're recommending both parts, the upper and lower portions of Tally Ho. And then the upper and lower portions of tandem would come as a second phase, if and when money becomes available. We received two bids. We broke these into, the way we bid it was we broke them out into the phase, each phase into a base bid, which included the chip seal as being the base bid with a alternate for full depth for three inches of asphalt over six inches of base. While the preference would be to do the six inches of base with the three inches of asphalt, the, the additional cost probably is not reflective of what we need to do. So we're going to go with the, we'll go with the chip seal. We're recommending. And so the bids were received with, for this one, the phase one, you can see the difference in the bids received between Gonzalez Asphalt and Sunland Asphalt. And so we're going to make the recommendation that we award the contract to Gonzalez Asphalt, the base bid of three hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And that includes a water improvement of about eighty thousand dollars that was added to the project to improve the water line before we cover it up with pavement. Any questions?
So when are we looking at tandem?
Tandem will be a, we'll have to look at, in order to this project, we're going to have to look at our overall budget and see what has to go away. And then if tandem becomes a project that we want to do over those other projects, it becomes a priority at this point.
I mean, anytime you're on the side of a mountain, you're going to get drainage problems. You're going to get, any unpaved road is going to become rutted immediately and probably unusable for seven, seven days or more. At least that's when I talked to several of the residents, that's what they told me. So I just think that that needs to be bumped up under priority.
We can definitely do that, sir.
I mean, talking about a long time, we're already approaching the gestation period of an elephant. So it's been a long time.
We understand that and we're over budget on this.
And now how much tandem is going to be at the same price or a little bit cheaper?
Tandem's about the same. Tandem was the, let me go back slide if I could. Let me go back. So, oh, I didn't bring that one up. It's in the, let me get my packet here. And of course, I'm now need to put on the cheaters. Tandem drive, the base bid price for doing tandem was three hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Was the?
The, the total price would be about seven hundred and fifty K?
Correct. In the packet that I gave you, I have that as an alternate in my staff report. That would have been both phases with chip seal. That was item F in the staff report, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred and one dollars.
Yeah. I just don't think it's, it's good policy to have, to do one roadway and then wait a period of time and do the other roadway. I mean, we're into monsoon season already. I'd like to get this done and off the plate. I mean, I'll defer to other council members, but I just think these people have been waiting thirty years.
Certainly.
I'm not pinging on you. I'm just saying, you know, kind of an observation. It's thirty years. I mean, it's time.
It's certainly an alternate that, that we have in the staff report. It's up to council at this point to decide if they want to make that recommendation or that amendment to the, to do both phase one and phase two.
Hell, I have a question. Is, is this just chip sealing? I mean, are we not, are we doing anything with the design of the road? So it's not?
Yes. The design that was, the final design was to slope, basically to regrade the road to a slope, add curb to the, curb to south side, improve all the driveways so that they would maintain the water within the roads. So there are concrete driveways that would go in and to, that, so we could direct the water down. This cross slope on the roads will be about six percent and, but be caught by curb, so it will direct the water. And again, we have to do both part portions, so we convey the water across Sunset Boulevard to the south or to the eastern, western portion of the roads and then convey them out to drainage areas. So it has been certainly something that has been looked at to get the water off the roads, out of the, and down the roads in a safe and safe manner.
So what projects might you have to put aside in order to do both?
Well, we have one project that we're still currently dependent upon state land to give assietments. That would be the Fortieth Street in Galvin, chip seal or excuse me. Well, it's not a chip seal. It's actually a project that would, where we would mill and pave the project.
How much is that much?
That's about two hundred thousand. We would have to then go back and look at other projects and reestablish new priorities if we go with both these projects. So it becomes this, these projects versus other projects that we have on our priority that we're looking.
More cost effective to do than both now?
It would be. I mean, I feel that we got, that we really did receive good, you know, fairly good prices on this. Hundred and eighty thousand of this is, of the seven hundred thousand is for water line improvements. There's a two-inch, old two-inch main in tandem that would be replaced with a six-inch main. So some of this money would come out of utilities if, unless we come out with some other way to lower that price that Sean can come out with. But again, about a hundred and eighty, eighty-seven thousand in change is for water improvements.
I'm kind of on the mindset that, that we need to do it all now. Just as an example, we had to put a new roof on my daughter's house because the insurance saw that part of it was not in good shape. And the option was to do half the roof. It's like, I'm not going to do half the roof. Why, why would do half? Why would we do half? Why would we fix half the problem?
Yeah.
I think we need to fix the whole problem.
I concur.
How, oh, tandem looks to be shorter distance.
Tandem is a shorter street.
So is the price so close to?
Tandem is not as wide currently as wide. Part of the problem we have with both Tally Ho and tandem is that we've had, over the thirty years, we've had more and more people taking more and more share of the right of way to build improvements. And we have to maintain a certain width of road. So we've had, so we, part of it is the encroachments that we've had in the road that have to be modified in order to get the roads and the driveways in. In some places, we have twelve feet of road in a fifty-foot right of way. So that's part of the problem that we have. And it's also in both cases, they're very steep between fifteen and eighteen percent. So the contractors are not really as thrilled about working on these, but we did find they're willing to do it for the prices we got.
If, if we waited on, on the tandem project, is, is there any chance it'd be cheaper in the future? Or, or is, is this as good as we're going to get as far as?
I, I wouldn't bet on cheaper. I still wouldn't bet on cheaper. The cost of oil, I believe, is going to go up and in both chip seal and asphalt. Those are the, the primary component. And then again, we could, we can talk with the contractor about phasing, but at the same time, the bids are typically only good for sixty days. So we would probably be rebidding phase two if we didn't do it now.
So, so you've got to do both of them, you'd have about seven hundred and sixty thousand or so.
Seven seventy-two, six oh one.
You've got a budget of two sixty. It's in the budget for two sixty. So three times the budget.
Correct.
And you're getting a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to do the water improvements, which you're doing because we're, we're missing.
Right, so that's about six hundred, so we're about, so six hundred thousand. The, we have Fortieth Street in there if we didn't get the state land. Right of way worked out this year, so we have to push it. That would be two hundred, about two hundred and ten thousand. And then we'll have to look at where the other priorities are as far as the streets that we have.
Are there any, are any of those other streets in, in as high a priority as this, as far as the, the grade and the drainage problems?
They're not as difficult, but they're, but they probably serve more people. That's part of the problem is that it's a service, a service of population versus the, you know, sort of the, the problem. That's part of the problem is that it's a service, a service of population versus the, you know, sort of the, the promise to do this. So again, so I can make the recommendation, but
It's the roads are already, those roads are already paved though, correct?
No, like Morning Star, which we have in, in the budget.
Right.
Morning Star to Chip Seal. That one is an unpaved road that we were going to go in, but we had a rally of the population for Morning Star. That's about three hundred thousand or three hundred and fifty thousand to do that road. We have a road that connects, you know, connects between Olson and Barbie that I think we have three hundred and fifty thousand. Hopefully we could get that one in lower to try and recover some money. But that's the project that would then redirect, that's Fifty-third Street between Olson Barbie. So those are the ones I'm thinking off the top of my head that are probably the higher priorities, but at the same time, we haven't bid those out yet. So we're not, we're not committed to a timeline.
Mayor. Sorry. Um, we have this on the agenda as, as a phase one, the way it's agenda size. We hear the council very loud and clear that they like to do the full meal deal, which is the two phases. And so what I suggest is that we go ahead and seek your action tonight on the first phase is proposed before you. Then we come back at the next council meeting and we can show you the different priorities out there in funding. And you can make a decision on the, the second phase and how that's going to be phased and what would be cut in lieu of that. But we can't really do that tonight because it's not really agenda sized. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But I think you could also tell Gonzalez that you award this first phase with their commitment to keep the second price in place until you get back to them in the next.
Or better. I mean, we're, you know, throwing another whole job at them. I think they should do better.
We will definitely talk to them. Believe me, let's make a deal is still a, is a game show that we like to play.
Okay, so any more questions? Yeah, I just, I just have some heartburn about splitting it into two. Where, where they have water issues already, this fixes but the water issues on both streets. And we're going to pave the roadway for the first time in thirty plus years. I mean, I, I just think this is no brainer. One last quick, I'm sorry, Tom.
And that will come back to us. Phase two will come back to us. So we have that opportunity.
Mayor. We're, we're, if, if, if we were doing phase one tonight, as you recommended, would you be coming back later this year with, to do the phase two? Or would you put it off till next year?
Well, we, again, we would study the, we would study the overall budget for the road improvements within our budget and find out whether we have the, what, what the priority is. And then we would have discussions on priorities. I would say bring back, you know, since we have a hard price and we have plans, we've spent the money on the plans and we have a hard price. But at the same time, until we have the, until we have the items and decide where the money's coming from. I mean, council always has the ability to go into contingency, but I don't know that you want to do that. That would be a council decision.
Well, thi- this really blows a hole in your entire pavement program because you can probably assume that the remaining parts of that program are going to see this, some, some, at least some higher escalation to what's in the budget.
Correct.
Accurate?
I think so.
So we're not just talking about a few of the, of the, of the projects that are on the back end. There's likely to be some other projects that are going to make that list as these other bids come in higher.
That's my, that's my concern also.
This is a complicated. This is, you're probably going to have to go back and sharpen your pencil and everything else to see just what we could do this year.
Correct.
Okay, other question?
Like, the only thing I would add or suggest is put Morning Star off for a year. If the small road with a dozen homes, it's been gravelled since the beginning. There's no great urgency except for some car collectors up there. And push off Morning Star and get the stuff within the town core done. That, that's just my own personal opinion. Because the town's done such a great job with the mitigation of Morning Star Road, particularly with the treatment it's done, that there's virtually no dust. We're in compliance with Maricopa County's particulate standards. We have fewer traffic than Maricopa County standards. And I know you're being lobbied to pay Morning Star, but it just seems to me it's an out of the way route for a dozen residents when you've got stuff, part of the infrastructure in the downtown. And if you treat those folks nice, they might come into your sewer plant later on. So that's my other suggestion.
Okay, there is public comment?
Mayor.
Yes, sorry. A lot in discussion phase, but
Well, it's a question.
Okay.
It, so we're talking about double chip seal as opposed to asphalt.
Correct.
So we're already going with a lesser durable product in order to maintain fidelity to the, to the, to the pavement plan.
Correct.
Around town. Okay. Just want to make sure that was. Anybody else?
No, I, I kind of agree. I think you can push Morning Star off. I live right around the corner from there. And the, the, the bait, you know, the material that she laid down there already, it's, it's almost like it's paved.
Yeah, we did. I think that our staff did a great job when they put in the GSA on Long Morning Star, but
It's great. I mean, you can go on there and even when it's raining or everything else, there, there's no dust, there's no mud. I mean, it's, it's quite nice. So I think we could push that off a year, use that money to pay both tandem and tally hoe.
Public comment?
Shantel.
Really in no town, in no city, in no county, should somebody have to fight for two years to get less than a half a mile of road paved? The reason that the encroachments are there is because the town has allowed them. And one of those encroachments was a pony wall that was built because somebody's front door was getting water flooded to it. The water flows the way that it does because the town allowed all of these builds higher up on the mountain with no water studies. Negligence on your part, you forgot to get water studies. That's kind of amazing. The other problem I have with not doing tandem, I don't have a dog in the fight for tandem, but in a way that I do because I'm breathing the dust from tandem. It is in writing repeatedly that GSA has been used on tally hoe. I'm pretty certain it's been used on tandem. I bet if we did a study, it is. Silica dust is monitored by OSHA because of employees that are exposed to it are at health risk. I listen to my neighbor hacking every morning because he spends his mornings out on his patio and he has for twenty years. The twenty years this town has put silica dust all over the road. It is not sealed the way that it should be, the way that Maricopa County does it. I already called and verified that with them. We are breathing toxic dust. You do not seal it. You do not maintain it and it is dangerous. I have a child who is four months old and I live on that road. You will pay for a new house if you do not fix this.
Thank you. Other public comment?
I have no others.
Okay. We are ready for a promotional discussion. This is discussion and we probably kind of mixed the discussion with the questions. Do you have any more discussion on this? So ready for motion?
Motion.
Okay.
Don't see you can.
Council discussion approval to award a contract for the, I'm sorry, council action needed. Motion to award a contract for phase one tally hoe and tandem local drainage mitigation project to Gonzalez asphalt for an amount up to three hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. I would like to make an amendment to the motion that we also pave tandem. So you're saying do phase one and phase? Phase one and phase two. And I'll second that. Seven hundred and seventy-two thousand and whatever the change was.
Six hundred and one.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So comments?
Mr. Mayor, tandem is not on the agenda for act.
Yeah. Oh, it isn't.
No.
So I'm not allowed to make an amendment?
No, I don't spend more. It's not agenda.
You mentioned tally hoe and tandem local drainage mitigation.
Problem is, you, you've only, you've only quoted phase one. You didn't say phase two. So.
So can I amend it to add phase two?
It's not on the agenda. I mean, the agenda is, is, is tally hoe. Now they, they discussed it, but your, your, your staff recommended only phase, only phase one tally hoe. If, if, and I don't know, you have the funds, if, if, where do you have the funds to approve that tonight?
Coming back at the next meeting.
That's my point. I mean, if, if you're saying and direct staff to come back at the next meeting with funds to accomplish, that would be, that would be acceptable.
All right, then I will say to the staff, I'll amend that to say, come back at the next meeting with the funding to, to do phase two.
Yes.
Because phase two needs to be done also.
That works.
Is, is that motion clear enough, Theresa?
I'm sure you'll figure it out.
I think so.
Can we hear that motion?
I got the high sign here. Okay, so we're, we're, so we're back to phase one. And on the end down there for the mount, there's a, and, and staff to bring back phase two at the next meeting.
Yes.
And it's very clear to the staff that we understand the intent of the council is to do phase two, but we'll come up with the options on how we're going to fund it.
Okay, so, Mayor, do you still have your second from that end down there?
The second.
Oh, yeah.
And I, and I will follow the motion with my second.
Thank you, thank you. Any more discussion from other, do you have a second then? Do you want to comment?
Just a comment that what, what I'm hearing, and I've been up that hill a few times. It is also a health and safety situation there that is tight, steep hill.
I just want to ask a good question rhetorically. I wonder if we should hold this until the next meeting and do both that? Because I have a bad feeling that there is some slippage here that we, so, thank you, sorry. I, I think, I'm, I just, I'm not making a motion, but I'm asking rhetorically, if you wait till the next meeting for both of these. Because I can see this going through, but I can see the second phase losing in higher priorities, which are being staff driven and not council driven. And I think they should both go together. And I don't think the delay of thirty more days or fifteen more days is going to matter in order to accomplish what the vice chair supports and with another member of the council supports. That's, that's just my suggestion.
Mayor and council, my previous discussion was that we would bring back the different projects that we've identified for, and councils approved as part of the budget for this fiscal year and show you what we believe would be the priorities. And of course, the council can make adjustments as you always can as far as the budget goes. And so you can help identify if you, we already heard earlier, Morning Star might be a potential. So it would be up to the council to make the decision as to what they believe priorities are of those streets. Staff will come in with our professional opinion. And of course, the council will make the final decision on that. Does that make sense? So we will come back with a funding plan
Yeah.
to show how we can do phase two and how it's going to be paid for. The council can, wants to make changes to how, what projects we're looking at cutting or deferring. The council can make those decisions themselves to be able to come up with the, the funding.
Are you comfortable with proceeding with phase one tonight and phase two next meeting? And that you can balance all these priorities?
I believe so.
Potential increases in the meantime?
Yes, I believe so.
To answer the rhetorical question.
Yes. Because if we bring back phase, we will bring back phase two to you. And then, and with a list of, with a list of priorities and that we have to balance our budget for the year, assuming that you're going to go forward with phase two.
And, and then you would explain to Gonzalez that, that due to the state law, we can't address something that's not on the agenda. So we, we're, that the, the intent, but not the vote of the council seemed to be to do the both, both phases.
Yes, we will certainly talk with Gonzalez about that. And they've been a very good partner for us on other projects throughout the years. And I believe that they will be more than happy to delay. You know, it, as part of the scheduling, the delay in between phase one and phase two will not probably impact their overall schedule.
Tom, does that, so you're, you're?
Well, I trust the good people on both tables here. So whatever works best. I just, as long as we have a really clear understanding, I think we do. And I appreciate your entertaining question. So.
Okay.
Hal, I'm looking through the packet. I don't see how long this bid, this quote is good far from them. Do you? I believe if you look at the, the bidding documents that we gave them, which are part of the, of, part of the contract, it's, would be appendix C in the contract. I believe they have to hold the bids for sixty days.
Okay, so it would be enough time.
There will be enough time. Typically, there's time limits on quotes, so.
Okay, other comments from the council before we vote? This, this is, we're voting on, we're voting on the original, I'll just repeat what I think I have. A motion to award a contract for phase one tally hoe and tandem local drainage mitigation project to Gonzalez asphalt for an amount up to three hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and staff to bring back phase two at the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay. So with that, we'll take the roll call.
Councilmember Ogerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkma?
Yes.
Councilmember McGwire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. The I seven, seven zero, so phase one is in the books. The next item on the agenda is council discussion approval of the twenty twenty-four town council organizational performance measures presented by the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as you recall, back last month on June nineteenth, the council had a chance to listen to a presentation by the bridge group. You recall that the bridge group is responsible for working with the council and facilitating a strategic planning process that ended in the council adopting the strategic plan last November. And a very important part of that process is having organizational performance measures. And so the, the department directors and I worked very closely with the bridge group last February and did some refining of those. And on June nineteenth, those were presented to the council. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I do want to also point out that we will be periodically giving updates as part of our department reports as to how we are working and accomplishing the performance measures and the data that's being collected. That I'd be happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have.
Grady, I just have some very minor corrections.
Sure.
On page one twenty of two oh four under fiscal sustainability, the third one down, we, we refer to our town here as a city in three different places. And I
That's a very good point. That should be turned and converted back to town. I
Right.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Up here, the document might be in other places.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out.
Other questions?
I have one question and it's under developmental services and I guess what I'm looking at there is counting numbers of days and numbers of hours and the time it takes to get questions answered. And, and I get that. And I think that is an area that, that will be productive for the town. But I also wonder in the bigger scheme of things, where our ordinance review and revision might be, how does that fit into this? Because I think that's a really important piece for Cave Creek right now.
Councilmember Alkma, you are referring to the strategic plan that indicates that there should be about three to five
Yes.
ordinances reviewed and, and brought back to council each year?
Yes.
Is that? So could you point to this? I've got the table in front of me and I'm not seeing the one that you specifically brought up.
Well, what I was looking at was, let's see, so we're on page one twenty-three of two, of two oh four and
Is it the average days for initial plan review?
Yeah.
That particular one there?
Yes.
Okay. And you want to know how that ties back into our ordinance review and
Idea of ordinance review. That sounds like it's a what happens in the office review.
This really is, um, and a lot of the performance measures that you see before you tonight, um, really, it's distilling the strategic plan down to a lower operating, um, department level. And so I would tell you that those are still on the radar. In fact, um, I just had a meeting with the, the mayor today, and there's three financial ones that will be bringing back to council that are having to do with the town code and procurement because of some issues that we recently have found. And we found in working with our town attorney that those are needing to be amended. For instance, we don't have a payment arrangement plan that we currently have authorization to be able to work with our utility customers on. Um, there's a number of things like that, that we've identified that we're going to be bringing back to you. I believe it's coming, um, if I'm not mistaken, September is what we've scheduled that already for. But I know it doesn't really answer your question here, but this is really specific to what I would call data collection as it relates to, um, more operating, um, procedures and, and the operations of the departments.
I just don't want the big ideas to get lost in the minutia.
They, they, uh, they will not.
Thank you.
Other questions? We, we have, uh, for those in the audience, we've been through this many times, we go on, these, uh, these measures, and it's, it's, it's been a, we've hired a consultant to do a lot of this work, and it's, uh, it's something that's really needed in the town, and many other towns do this, so we're moving into the mainstream here. So I guess if there are no further questions, we got public comment on this, I presume?
I have no one wishing to speak.
No, there's no public comment? They were looking for a motion. I will make it. Motion to approve the twenty twenty-four town council organizational performance measures.
Second.
Um, this has been a long time coming, and I, I come from business where this is the way you do business, uh, all the time. This is when, uh, I've seen organizations move from sub-performance to amazing performance. And, uh, along with employee satisfaction with their jobs, because everybody knows what you're shooting for. We're put, we're all have the same, uh, same set of measures from the top to the bottom, so I'm highly in favor of this.
I agree. Good process.
Others? Seeing none, uh, this is not financial, so we'll have a voice vote on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries seven, zero. Item number four is, uh, council discussion approval to purchase smart gov permitting inspection and asset management software to include deployment and implementation of professional services in an amount up to a hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and three dollars and ninety-five cents over a five-year contract term and authorize the town manager and staff to execute the required contract documents presented by the development services director. Welcome back from Australia. Did you bring a koala bear?
Uh, I tr- I tried. I tried to get detained in the, uh, Melbourne airport before having to get on that flight home, but I'm here. Um, thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's good to be back. So, um, when, when I was first elevated to the development services director for Cave Creek, um, I wanted to have one-on-one meetings with the building division staff and really get a sense of, uh, what we needed to do to get better. I'm a big proponent of finding cracks, trying to eliminate cracks at any time possible, um, streamlining processes, um, all of those things. And really, the resounding response I got from, from my staff at that time was, we need to get out of our current permitting and, and code enforcement software. Um, I've used, I work for, I think the town's had it almost a decade now. Um, I cannot tell you that it's ever been updated. Um, they've never updated the software. A lot of things, um, I'm not going to bad mouth and, uh, software platform. But as times have changed and customers' expectations and needs have changed, simple things that other communities are doing such as, um, online plan review, online permitting, submittals, um, issuing permits online, taking payments online, all of those things, uh, we, we have not been able to do as a result of our, uh, current software choice. So about eight months ago, uh, with a group of stakeholders, I know the town clerk was involved, um, town engineer, utilities director, uh, some other staff members began shopping different permitting software companies. Um, I put in my staff report about six, but I actually listed them out before I came in here. It was, it was seven that we ended up looking at and getting pricing from. Um, really what's, what's set apart, uh, smart gov for us was a familiarity with the, with the software. Uh, we have two key staff members that do a lot with permitting and code enforcement that have used it at their various stops, uh, before getting to Cave Creek. So they're, they're comfortable with the platform already. Uh, one of them did the rollout for Florence, um, about four years ago, when Florence went to smart gov. Uh, pricing is, is pretty standard. Uh, we looked at one, a seller who I think Maricopa County uses. Uh, they were very, very expensive, over double the cost. Um, and then the rest are kind of right in line. They do pricing based on population, so they're not really gouging. Most, most companies in this game do it based on your population. So they're pretty, pretty standard and on par. And really, the deciding factor for the stakeholder group once again was that familiarity with the program. So really, the, the biggest component is, uh, smart gov's ability to work with Blue Beam, which is our on, online plan, submittal and review software, as well as express bill pay and casel, which is our, our finance, uh, and bill payment software. And that's something that we haven't been able to do, um, with our current provider, our current software. I guess the, the last thing I'll go over, you have the pricing in front of you, the future year pricing, there's a one-time, uh, startup cost for fifty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. That, uh, covers the rollover into taking all of our existing data and migrating it to this new platform. And then the yearly subscription costs, which shows, um, the pers- the slight percentage increase over a five-year term. The cost for the new software was a component of the proposed and adopted fiscal year budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. And it's, uh, related to the strategic plan, strategic priority number two, economic vitality, and an action item which states software integration, integrating plan review and permitting software to improve permitting process. And the last thing I'll leave on was something that the town clerk sent me, uh, last week that almost ruined my weekend. And that was, uh, House Bill twenty-two, ten, um, which requires, uh, quite a bit of reporting, um, reports, uh, regarding building permit application time it takes, the things that we were just talking about in our performance. So there's a lot of components and another reason that I believe our, our choice for software platform will meet and exceed our needs for running reports, generating reports, and getting, um, the numbers that substantiate what we do and, and our average time to do things. With that, I'll answer any questions, Mayor. Thank you.
I was going to ask you that, Luke. Uh, can you estimate, uh, in percentages, uh, how this might improve your efficiency? Not only internally, but customer efficiency?
Absolutely. Um, and, and actually, uh, Taylor Brodessen with, um, Smart Gov is on. Smart Gov, I actually, so, just a, just a quick background on Smart Gov, uh, they used to be Brightly Software. Um, Smart Gov does this so well that Granicus, which if you've, uh, if you're around kind of the software industry, Granicus is kind of like the big dog on the block. They just kind of acquire different companies that do things really well and include it in their portfolio. So if you see Granicus, don't be confused. It's, it's really the smart gov developed by Brightly Software. But Taylor's here. She's, she actually did prepare a quick PowerPoint, um, that can go through some of the metrics and, um, time savings, cost savings, all of those things that they see from other communities.
Which one is Taylor?
That's me. Thank you. And let me just, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. Appreciate it. Yeah, so I'll actually, I'll answer that question specifically. Let me pull this up. I have a, a couple of metrics, and I don't need to go through all of this, but, um, you know, specifically, I think the first question was on, you know, the percentage and time savings and thinking specifically for the public. So in talking with Luke and the team, you know, our understanding is the whole permitting application process today is all done, you know, in person, potentially via email, but basically what we consider to be manual. Um, so we provide an online customer portal that integrates into the town's website. And what we see from our customers is a ninety percent adoption of that customer portal in the first year. Um, so that said, I'll, I'll talk to you a little bit more about what that means for the town specifically. But you can see here, you know, ninety to ninety-five percent are very happy with the ease of use, uh, over reduction times and processing we've seen in just the, the plan review, the intake, uh, the inspection review process by having everything updated in real time. Um, so those are some of the metrics across the board with our customers, and we have just under three hundred that use smart gov specifically. But what we did is we tried to kind of put these metrics into what does that mean for Cave Creek? And so last year, uh, the town processed four hundred and thirty-one permits and over twenty-three thousand inspections. So based on that, moving really more from that manual, in-person, over the phone to the majority of that being online. Uh, we determined about, you know, five hundred and thirty-nine hours saved per year just in the issuing of permits, over a thousand hours saved just in the scheduling of inspections, not going down into the actual resulting of inspections and publishing back to the applicant. Um, and then as Luke talked about reporting, you know, we took a subset of reports done by building monthly and weekly, and all of our reports are automatically generated out of our system based on the data within it. Uh, so this is a, I'm sure there's many more hours to be accounted for here, but just a partial of it, um, a hundred and forty-four hours saved. And then what we did too is take the processing cost, so to take the cost of doing a in-person transaction on average is sixteen dollars and ninety cents. Where online, the per transaction cost is about forty cents. So that's where we got that savings of the processing cost, um, and moving online. And one thing I'll let you know is, I think a lot of people, you can fully push everyone online, but most people keep a hybrid available. So as people who might not yet be ready to adopt the online portal, uh, the, the system that the staff will use is just as user-friendly and helps to get people moving in the right direction.
Very good.
Okay, good. Everybody's.
Yeah.
Questions from council?
Yeah, do you? Yeah. So it's on the cloud. How long do you keep the data in place?
So the data is held in perpetuity and you have full, um, data ownership. So we're hosted by Amazon Web Services. Um, but we will actually migrate the data from I work as well. So we'll have all of the historical and current information in smart gov, and that can be held in perpetuity.
The reason I'm asking, it's kind of a, a kind of a personal love, uh, personal level, uh, history. When I put my generator in for my house, uh, it turned out that, uh, my house was built in a county island at the time. And, uh, there was no record. And, uh, one of the things that the electricians discovered as they went through is about half of my, uh, uh, half of the circuits in my house were not grounded. So it would have been nice to have gone back and got seen what kind of electrical work had been done. So I do think that it would be nice feature that perhaps, uh, if people come back five years from now and say, hey, I want to do some more work, uh, we could spit out what they've already got and say, okay, it'll cost you ten bucks to get the previous stuff, so at least you have a starting point. Just a thought.
I have another, one last question. So in addition to the one forty-four, seven oh three, ninety-five, which, you know, would kick this off, would we have an annual contract with you? How does that work?
The, so the one forty-four is, uh, what, what we're asking council to approve is the five-year term of the contract.
Oh, it's a five-year term?
Correct. So the initial year one is, um, need a seventy-three thousand one hundred and sixty, then there'll be an ongoing year two, year three, year four, year five subscription ranging from seventeen thousand in year two up to eighteen thousand six eighty-six in year five. So that's the, the whole, the whole shebang.
So we would have support from this company or not? It's just?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's my question, if we would have?
Which is, and once again, I, I don't want to belabor the point of our, our current, uh, provider, but getting customer service, getting things resolved in a, uh, quick manner of time is, has proved difficult over the years. And, um, once again, I bring it back to the familiarity of, of our staff having with this, uh, company going in. I think it should turn the, the learning curve on getting a new platform up and running. I think those things, those milestones will be, um, reduced, so.
Good.
I, I have a question.
Good, well.
Um, I, I really appreciated hearing that you worked with the other, uh, division managers about the issues. Uh, and I'm wondering, in broad brush strokes, what is the ongoing staff development that gets this up and running? And what does that feel like? Just, how, how is staff supported with this new?
Yes, um, the, the customer service, and probably Taylor and Helen could speak to that maybe, but, um, really for, for staff, just in our demos and what we've had hands-on working with, I mean, take the staff members that have done this other places out. Um, the, the biggest thing in this seems like such a simple ask for a, uh, software company to put into a permitting software, but is a clock that notifies you when your review is past due. Amazing, right? Seems pretty, pretty intuitive, but that's not what we're currently dealing with. So it's a lot of staff getting up and walking around and, and saying, hey, I hate to be a pest, but that was due two weeks ago, and we need to get these plans out and back to the applicant so that they can make corrections and resubmit and those types of things.
That's the stuff.
It's interesting.
Yeah.
So.
Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, this has public comment.
I have no one wishing to speak.
Okay, so we are ready for a motion?
I'll make it. Motion to approve the purchase smart gov permitting inspection and asset management software to include deployment and implementation professional services in an amount up to one hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and three dollars and ninety-five cents over a five-year contract term and authorize the town manager and staff to execute the required contract documents.
Second.
Okay, you have the.
I'm very happy that we're finally getting something of this caliber. We've been waiting a long time. We've been asking a long time. And even worse than that, our customers have been waiting a long time. So it's time, and as soon as it's implemented, it won't be too soon. Thank you, Luke.
No, I, I think it's great. Uh, I think that we keep the records for the, for that. As somebody buys a new house and they come in to want to do something, they can see what was, what has happened to it in the past. That is a unique capability that I think is well worth having in the town.
Other comments? Okay, I, uh, that's a, this is a number one customer service issue that I hear about, uh, uh, traffic enforcement used to be number one, and now we have too much enforcement.
I took over traffic enforcement? That hurts my feelings.
But, but it does have cost savings, speed, benchmarking. I mean, this is, it hits all the buttons, so I'm highly in favor of this. And, uh, this is financial, so we'll need a roll call, Theresa.
Councilmember Ogerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkma?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Thank you.
Uh, we're on to one of my favorites. The council discussion approval of resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, a resolution of the mayor and town council, town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the opioid settlement funds agreements with Kroger Company and an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona regarding opioid settlement funds distribution. presented by the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a big presentation on this. I did want to make the council aware that the last couple of years, we've been seeing as part of the opioid settlement, you know, initially it was Big Pharma was involved and then you started seeing the big major pharmacies, the drugstores. And this is one that kind of came by that we weren't anticipating, which is Kroger. And Kroger, as you know, has like Fry's Food and Drug Stores and there's Kroger stores. And so we're not aware of what the total dollar value is at this time. That is still yet to be determined. So far, we've received approximately $40,000 from, or our share of the opioid settlement money. We're fortunate because we have utilized agreements with the Cave Creek Unified School District to help us with our education prevention activities. We also were able to work with the Caring Corps to help as it relates to some of their drivers when they might have some training so they can identify people that they are picking up or providing services to that might be under the influence or might need some additional care. So before you tonight is basically a request to authorize the town to engage with the state of Arizona on this intergovernmental agreement, which would then allow future dollars to flow to the town. And we anticipate that this would still be spent in the same way that we've been doing with the school district as it relates to education prevention activities. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have.
Seeing none, there's total comment on this.
I have no one wishing to speak.
So we're looking for a motion? I'll make it. Motion to approve Resolution, Resolution, R 2024-08, a resolution of the mayor and town council town of Cave Creek, Miracopa County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute opioid settlement funds agreements with Kroger Company and an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona regarding opioid settlement funds distribution.
Second.
I have no comment. You have the second?
Great idea.
Comments from council? This is, this is not, this is not financial. All right.
Since we don't know the dollar amounts, I would say it's not at this point.
By voice vote, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes seven zero. Council discussion approval authorizes the town manager execute an antenna license agreement with Desert Foothills Library to place a water meter collector site on the library building roof, presented by the utilities director. Sean, you have it.
Yeah. Yes, I'm back, Mayor Council. Good evening. I have a quick PowerPoint to help explain what we're trying to accomplish here. This work is actually in association with the town's water meter upgrade project. Next slide, Ryan. So we're trying to upgrade the town's water meters. A lot of cases are underreporting, but also requires us physically to drive by the sites to pick up the data. And in a lot of cases, the little radio transmitters are failing on the units too. So as part of that upgrade project that we've got some federal matching grant funds for, we're going to upgrade the system to what's called an advanced metering infrastructure, AMI system, that will allow us to collect near-real time data from the water customers, which I think moving forward will be a great thing for the town overall to really see where the water is being used and actually help identify issues with customers earlier than we could previously. But one of the main keys to these AMI systems is you need a collector site. Effectively, all the radios or all the meters right now currently put out a signal. It's about a one watt signal and it's constantly putting that out. So we need to have collectors that actually can hear that and then compile that. And they use cellular repeaters to actually send that back up to the cloud. Then we can see the data. And I'll show you an example, a couple of slides, just what that would look like. So one of the sites, we did some computer-based modeling and the next slide will show that. It's called propagation studies is you basically place where you think you can set the collector sites, how high they are above ground, and then it'll look at just ground elevations. It doesn't give you an exact model, but it gives you a good indication of what meters you can pick up. And where the Desert Hills Foothills Library is located on Schoolhouse Road at a high point, it'd be a great site for us. So we were able to work with the library. Then they were willing to allow us this license agreement to place the collector on top of the roof. We're actually going to do a solar installation, so it won't be powered for them, but we'll have a battery up there and a solar panel. And we'll have our antenna and equipment up there in the package. I show a picture of what the equipment looks like. And then it'll have its little cellular antenna that'll send the data set up. So what they agreed to is a 10-year term that can be renewed. And for the first 10-year term, there's no fee. So it's a great relationship working with the Foothills Library to get, to do what would be, I believe, a very significant improvement to our metering system. Next slide, Ryan. Real quick, this is the propagation study where I refer to that. So the blue points are our water meters. And this is one example, we placed the yellow text, you may be able to see, shows different collector sites are proposing both in Cave Creek. And then in the future, we'd like to expand this system in the desert hills. We can actually start upgrading those meters in desert hills to allow this system to work. But you can see where the collector on the library, we believe that'll help us get a lot of the meters to the north part of the system. Even after that's all done, we expect about 20% of the meters, we're going to have to install individual cellular radios at each one of them. So getting the collector systems up allows us to really move forward with the installation of the meters and figure out where we have to go to individual cellular antennas. Next slide, Ryan. And then this is an example, council hasn't seen this before, but we have all the Neptune meters that we currently have. So that's all the Desert Hills meters and about 700 of the meters in Cave Creek have been changed out to Neptune meters, have report back to this software package called Neptune 360. So if the system setup, in this case, where I'm displaying the meter that's actually at the water ranch, it can show you up to hourly data of what we're using down there. You can see the water, our wastewater treatment plant uses a lot of water. Currently, we're having issue with the reclaim line down there. So they're using a little bit more water than they normally would for bottled water. But you can see the hourly consumption of that facility. We'll be able to get this level of data for most individual users. Users, and there's actually a user, a customer-facing portal version of the software that people will be able to log in and see their specifics. So we're seeing the backend, we see all the data. But again, being able to give this out to our customers, I think this can be a very useful tool for them. But it's all goes back to getting the collector site set up that they can actually listen to the meters themselves. So we can get this hourly data where currently we just drive by once a month. So it's just not the level of lackers you need. So next slide, Ryan. So yeah, we're asking council to authorize the town manager to execute the agreement with Desert Hills Foothills Library to place our water meter collector site on their library roof. So the first term will be the first 10 years and is a renewable agreement for the town. I think it's a great thing for the town and allows us to move forward with our water meter replacement project. I can answer any questions?
Having had a little bit of experience in the military with powered antennas or having a system that's power on a rooftop, what kind of grounding do you have for lightning? Because the library is the highest point anywhere around. And if you don't have some kind of lightning rod or something else there, the first time we get a nice storm, we're going to fry that equipment.
Yeah, I've actually seen, I thought they actually had lightning rods around the perimeter. They actually have other antennas up on top of their roof, they're freestanding. So that'd be something we have to watch for. As part of this program, we're actually looking to get one replacement, one spare collector, because any of the equipment could be damaged also. So at this point, we're talking about doing freestanding. So we won't be that much higher than the building parapet. And I believe they actually do have lightning rods around the parapet. So we are likely, we could get damaged, but our backup is to have a backup radio equipment that we can install at the unit.
RF engineer that we can consult somewhere just to find out. I mean, this is kind of an expensive chunk of gear, rather have it not fried.
Okay. Something we talked to the other about.
Sean, we've had situations in the past where people have had exorbitant water bills because they didn't realize that there was leakage going on in their homes. Will this enable us to do a better job of communicating with those people so they become aware if there's a problem?
Yes, that's one of the major, Mayor Council, it's one of the major roles of the AMI system, advanced meter infrastructure is that it allows us both to see the data more quickly and allows the customers a backend portal that they can set up their own parameters. You know, if someone's away for several months, they can set some parameters to save that it goes above a certain level that they get an alarm. And something we can look at ourselves, the system actually does a lot of reporting already. Again, not all the meters are on, but we get some parameters about if the meter sees continuous use, it actually will be flagged in the system. So that's something we can work with the customer service staff to actually say, okay, let's, once a week, we'll go through this. We're going to get a lot of data. We have to realize we don't have all the staff resources, but it's something we can look at and say, hey, you're, start calling these people because the meters show continuous use, which would indicate some sort of leak going on in the system. Right now, the problem is that when we do the monthly drive-bys, then we have to, it takes us about two weeks to compile the bill and send those bills out. So even if someone's getting electronically, the leak might have started six weeks prior to them actually seeing it on their bill. And then by the time they see the bill, it's already continued for another couple of weeks before we read it again in two more weeks, then it propagates itself. So this will help cut that off from a billing perspective. It's not, it's going to be more that we press a button and we can get all the information and get the billing out a little quicker. But it's still going to be up to both us and the users themselves to watch this. But it gives everybody another tool to see their more instantaneous use, which we think will allow people to, you know, identify leaks a lot quicker and then identify usage patterns too, to potentially change it as we look forward to what stress points we might have in the town's water resources. I think this is a huge improvement for us.
Thank you.
Seeing no further, there is public comment?
I have no one wishing to speak.
Okay, we're looking for a motion.
I'll do it.
Nope. Mr. Bunch?
Oh, motion to authorize the town manager to execute an antenna license agreement with Desert Foothills Library to place a water meter collector site on the library building roof.
Second.
Just makes sense.
Did you want the second? Go ahead.
Yeah, just make sure you get an RF engineer to check it out. Like I said, it's an expensive piece of equipment. I think it's a good idea and I think it's, you know, long overdue. But I just don't want something fried just because, you know, we didn't quite install it correctly.
Other, other question, other comments? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. This is not financial. So do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. The final agenda item is council discussion approval to purchase a trailer-mounted vacuum excavator from Vermeer Mountain West for an amount up to $118,000 presented by the utilities director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, another couple of quick slides to help explain what we're looking at. This is the unit we're looking to purchase. I'll point out, there's a little error in the staff report. I mentioned, we actually rented a LP 573 trailer recently for a couple of months while our other trailer was down. So you're seeing and actually the action is for this VX 50 unit. It's the next level up, which actually is better for us overall. Next slide, Ryan. So two years ago, the town actually purchased a Herco back trailer. Prior to that, the town would actually have to rely on bringing in outside contractors. That while that works, you're waiting on the contractors to get out there, especially in an after-hours emergency. And it also got costly and allowing, this is a tool that the staff can start digging. Because it's a vacuum excavator, they can actually start digging immediately that they get to the site. They don't have to work for the Blue Steak flurries because this is considered a soft dig and doesn't damage other utilities. The unit we purchased was our best effort at the time, two years ago, is Herco unit. It has a hard time. It doesn't have the suction that we can deal with in town soils. And really what it comes down to is the soils, when we get into the shaling conditions, it does not, it's not able to pick up those shaling parts, pieces effectively. It is good for things like water valve cans and meter box cleanings. And it actually does have a valve exerciser that we've actually utilized. You can see the bottom picture there that we've been able to break free some frozen valves to get them working. So it still has its uses. But as the town has utilized the equipment, next slide, Ryan. We think that it's better for us to actually have a larger unit, a more capable unit. So this unit has about double the suction capacity, over double the suction capacity of the current one that we have. Has larger debris and water tanks. That's good in emergency excavation. We don't have to stop and dump and refill with water so we can work longer to get the solution identified. It's because of larger suction, it can be better, especially in the rocky soily areas. We can, it's more capable pulling up. And it's just overall allows the staff to be more efficient. We're not going to give up the old unit. This is a critical piece of equipment and we'd like to continue to keep both because we actually just had the water line break on New River Road by 50th Street. We actually had both trailers, both the rental unit and the existing Herco unit out there. So they both have their needs as being a critical piece of equipment. And as an example, the Herco piece of equipment had a problem with its hydraulic pump. The vendor actually had difficulty obtaining a new pump. And so it's one of the reasons we started renting the premier unit a few months ago. It's because we were waiting on the parts delivery for the Herco unit. So having a backup to a critical piece of equipment like this is, I think, essential for the town overall. And allows us to just be more efficient overall. Next slide, Ryan. So we're asking is a motion authorize the purchase of a trailer-mounted vacuum equipment. Again, there's an error in the text, but the motion doesn't, it doesn't affect the motion. The equipment itself, we're getting a credit back from the vendor for renting the other unit, which is the smaller capacity unit. But we had set aside $140,000 in their capital program to make this purchase. So we're coming in under that. We did expend some of the dollars in the operational budget while we were renting, while the other unit was up. But we think this is a good addition to the town's fleet and a great overall addition to our tools for making sure we can be more efficient in dealing with issues in the town's water system. With that, I can answer any questions?
Questions? I'll make the motion. Seeing none, a public comment? Is there a public comment?
I have no public comment.
So?
Joe, you need, you need to go there. Yeah, no, you need to go up to the microphone.
So I did a lot of walking.
Joe Friedman.
I actually was at 50th Street in New River and this one lady came out and talked to me about that very break. She was pretty upset and they had to wait till two o'clock in the morning. I recommend you guys do this.
Thank you, Joe.
That's clear.
All right, now we're ready for a motion.
Okay. Motion to approve the purchase of a trailer-mounted vacuum excavator from Vermeer Mountain West for an amount up to $118,000.
Second.
Got to have the tools to do the work.
Okay.
This sucks, but we have to do it.
Oh, my. It's kind of late for that.
It's, meeting's almost over, you can tell. Okay, this is, we have public, we have publicly, okay, we're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkma?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Base Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. No. Meetings adjourned.